...2015 meeting of the Jackson City Council to order, and we'll call on Councilmember Ernest Brooks to lead us in our invocation and pleasy allegiance. If you would, please rise.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I would like to present to you my good friend and spiritual steward Reverend William Watson, pastor of the historic First Baptist Church. Reverend Watson is a student at Union University in the Theology Admission Program, as well as a U.S. Army veteran. Reverend Watson.
Let us pray. Our God and our Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to be here to discuss civil matters. It is you who have established the family. It is you from the family that established the order of government, to allow us to so bring order to chaos. And then, Lord, it is you who allowed us to so worship and celebrate you in such a wonderful way in the manner of the establishment of the church. And now, as a body of people, as a body of those who are united for the good, as a body of those who have come together to hear and discuss those things to further implement justice, right, and rules for the sole order of this society. Lord, give wisdom, give insight, give responsibility, give inspiration, and give revelation to this moment, that, Lord, we may do best by your people, best by this moment, best by one another, in brotherly love. Lord, this is our prayer, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. We're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, I need, I think you can show all council members present. I have an board's approval of the minutes of April 7th, 2015, to the council meeting. Council members have received a copy of those minutes. If there's any additions or corrections to those, we'll accept them this time, otherwise, we'll go ahead and accept them. Item five is invitation for public comment. If there's anyone present who'd like to be heard under any item, under new business, if you'd let it be known at that time, I'll be happy to call on you. We have one proclamation this morning, and I'll come down and read that. Let me ask, this is Letter Carriers Day. I'll ask Lisa Tillman, Executive Director of RIFA, to come down, and also Annette Martin, if she's here, Brad Arnold, and Debbie Grushow, who is the acting postmaster here in Jackson. If you're present, just come on down to the podium. This is a proclamation, whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect nonperishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing their donations to local food banks. And whereas the letter carrier stamp out hunger food drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than 1 billion pounds of food have been collected. And whereas, we'd like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities, all the food collected in our community stays in our community, and we support letter carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. Now, therefore, we, Jerry Guest, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May the 9th, 2015, as Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day, and encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing nonperishable food items in or near your mailbox on food drive day. Your letter carrier will pick it up while delivering the mail, and together, we can all help feed our hungry. And witness where I, we here in two set our hands, and cause the seals of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Madison County, Tennessee, to be affixed this fifth day of May, 2015. And Lisa, let me present this to you because...
Or one of them, one of them...
Okay.
Why don't you come up and...
Okay.
And congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Here's going to be...
I just real quickly want to echo some of the mayor's words and thank the letter carriers for participating in this year, year after year after year. They have a job to do on any given day, and then to add on the burden of collecting food, a lot of food, on one single Saturday is a big undertaking, and we appreciate that very, very much. We've worked very closely with the letter carriers for years. Last year, I think we brought in, or they collected, over 16,000 pounds of food from the community. So it is, it's a, it is something, again, that is a lot of work for them to do on that single Saturday, but the benefits are so appreciated and so very much needed at RIFA and at food banks across the country. So, thank you very much.
I'll say something about that. Hi. I've been blessed to participate in this food drive. Twenty-three years here in Jackson, we have some of the most compassionate, generous people here that we love to serve and that we love to be a part of. It's a huge gratification day when even the smallest individual with the tiniest item is giving all they have. It's, it's a day we're proud of. It's the nation's largest, single-day food drive, and we are so happy to work with the city and on behalf of all the letter carriers who are going to work really hard Saturday. I want to accept this, and thank you so much for your support and recognition.
go straight to new business. Item nine is consideration of a bill of sale, assignment of Crystal Lake Tower site from Jackson Energy Authority to the City of Jackson. Lenunda, since you're here, would you come up and share with the council?
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
As of April, JEA had formerly had the rights, I guess you could say, or the management over the South Tower, the Crystal Lake Tower, which happens to be the oldest radio tower that we have here in the city. We took it over because JEA has abandoned it, but they built a new tower on Norton Hill on the 45 South, and it's a beautiful tower. And so they got all of their equipment out of the South Tower, and they have since turned it back over to us because we have our repeaters out there for the South District and the generator. It's six acres of land out there that's the city owns, as well as the building and the surroundings around it. And so, we've taken over that site because of the simple fact our radio system and our trunking system is out there for the city.
Any questions of council to Lenunda?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lenunda. Item two is consideration of resolution to approve the five-year consolidated plan, 2015 to 2019, and annual action plan for 2015, 2016. Morning, y'all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. I'm here to present the five-year consolidated plan for 2015, 2019, for your approval and submitted to HUD on May 15th of this year. Much of the data that was presented in the previous five-year plan has been updated with data from the HUD Required CPD Maps data. There are over, there's between 50 and 60 tables, which I decided not to really bore you with today. The plans are basically the same in regards to requirements, but the format process has changed from paper-generated to digital-generated, which has kind of caused local communities to have a nightmare with HUD. But we've managed to go through that process. The major differences are, from the two plans, is, like I said, we updated from the Census 2007-11, American Community Survey and HUD CHAZ data, 2007-11, and it's been incorporated into these tables. The number of low and modern income census tracts has changed from five, five years ago, to nine census tracts now. The NSRA has been expanded from census tracts five, nine, 10, and 11, and 12, to census tracts five through 11. So, we've added census tracts six, seven, and eight to the NRSA, Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area, and census tracts one and two, that's around the Kmart Wallace Road area, are now considered low and modern income census tracts, and eligible for a variety of different CDBG home programs. Homeless needs and priorities have been modified to accommodate a new HUD program, such as rapid rehousing category, which is in Emergency Solutions Grant. And we've made a change in the budget, which passed out this morning, to add 20,000 for rapid rehousing, tenant-based rental assistance demonstration, in collaboration with the Tennessee Homeless Solutions Organization, which is the homeless conduit and continuum care organization recognized by HUD for all of West Tennessee, excluding Shelby County. The TBR funds will be used only in Jackson, however, as a demonstration. And there's a projection of decreased funding in CDBG home and ESG over the next five years has been incorporated in this plan. This is a quick synopsis of the changes in the previous five-year plan. In the next five years, the goals and objectives have been shortened to meet HUD requirements, but they're basically the same with less detail, and at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this point.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Dave, with respect to our housing rehab and building houses, how funds have went down the last two or three years, is that correct?
Actually, they've gone down for the last eight years.
Yeah.
Yes.
But we're still doing some.
Uh, we still have incorporated those into this plan with our goals and objectives, which is to improve the quality and quality of affordable housing, and that is to continue the homebuyer incentive program for down payment closing cost assistance, and continue both the minor emergency repair and target rehab from home program in the NRSA. Those funds have decreased substantially, and so we, instead of serving 40 to 50 low-income households, primarily elderly, every year, we're probably going to be able only to anywhere from 10 to 15 with the funds.
Excuse me, Dave Long, those same lines relative to CDBG funds? You said we're able to serve less elderly. Are there other areas where we're hit?
Uh, yes, sir. The economic small business loan program has been on suspension for two years because we just don't have the funds. What compounds the problem is, there's, according to the data that we used, there's an increase in elderly households and an increase of low and modern income households in Jackson since the last five-year plan.
I just have one question. When you said that we're going from paper to digital...
I still have to do both.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, I mean, is there anything in that or anything in this plan at all that would make it more difficult for an individual to get the housing they needed, or is this just more something that the employees are having to deal with?
This is a requirement for us to receive the funds. I'll be honest with you, I don't know if anybody ever up there reads it, but they do use it. But the difference with digital this time is they're going to tie in the annual report to the budget that we present, and what we say we're going to do with the activities. So, therefore, it'll be easier, hopefully, it'll be easier to report on the, on the annual report that's due September 30th.
Sure. Go ahead.
Would you say we got some expanded areas this year over last year, or this five-year plan over the previous one? I'm assuming that doesn't mean we get more funds because we've got an expanded area, does it?
Yeah, we have expanded need.
Okay. All right. The other question is, does someone have to live in one of these particular areas to be able to receive the funds?
No, sir.
Okay.
Uh, it depends on the act...
They're just targeted areas.
Depends on the activity. The target area, the NRSA, is the primarily concentration of low modern income census tracts in the black community. In the NRSA, the census tracts on income are 73% of the residents are low modern income. That's very high. So, we target that in order to fund special programs like Boys and Girls Club, which allows us to give us some flexibility on how we use the funds, for now.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Before we vote, I want to express, on behalf of this council, our sincere appreciation to Mr. Dave Rossen, who's leaving us. I have worked with him for 20 years in the housing business and serving the low income, and he has been a gentleman, he's been a professional, he is a one-of-a-kind in knowing what he's doing. He's very articulate, and he has helped me a lot to rehab neighborhoods. And I want to express, on behalf of this council, all the fine work that you have done, and we're going to miss you, but we're looking forward to working with Ms. Face.
I'd just like to say that I would, it's effective June 30th, so you still got me for about two months. But anyway, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council, and especially Winston Hennig, who brought me back to Jackson, which, after I left the first time, I spent 25 years trying to get back, for the opportunity to serve the people of Jackson, both directly and through the leadership that the people elected. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hennig chose wisely, Dave. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank y'all very much. Item three is consideration of resolution to approve an agreement between Madison County, Tennessee, and the City of Jackson, Tennessee, to jointly fund the Jackson Madison County Public Libraries. Council has a copy of that resolution. Is there a motion to accept?
Uh, Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Cobb, did you get any kind of information on this, what we spoke about at the General Review?
Uh, I didn't get anything. There's been a recent change in what I understand is that we appoint, we don't have a designation.
That our appointments are just simply that, from anyone. We don't have a designation, that it has to be from a particular group, such as council, but nothing about that would exclude the mayor's appointment of somebody from council.
As a voting member.
As a voting member, yeah.
Okay.
I've got the minutes of that meeting here, Mayor. Uh, let me...
Yeah, I hear. It's, this is dated in the meeting that we had, March 2nd, 2011.
Is that a council meeting or a library board meeting?
It was just a meeting, a library meeting, between the county commissioners and, and Councilman Rahm and myself.
Ad hoc committee meeting, it says on here.
Okay.
And at the end of it, it says, "City and county officials discussed the present number of board appointments that were made by each governing body to the Library Board, and the possible change that could occur in the number of board appointments that each governing body could make to the Library Board based on the 210 census." And that's when, I think it was Commissioner Deaton, asked how we felt about appointing a voting member from each governing body, which at that time, and...
That is correct.
I'm correct. We agreed that that's what, that we could, that we would do.
That is correct.
What's the, what's the number on that Library Board, Mr. Cisco?
Seven.
Seven. Okay. This resolution simply deals the, the timing of the approval and the minimum stuff. I'd be glad to look at it and draft something, but I didn't have time between Thursday night and today to go through the process of getting that before here.
All right. You, in other words, you're planning on still continuing to look and...
Sure.
Okay. We can approve this, right, Mayor?
I think so. It won't affect that, and we'll, we'll still continue to look at...
So, I move to approve this.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. A second.
If I may, as I mentioned in the city council meeting, I'm 100% in favor of the library. I use the library, but I do have a little bit of a, of a problem asking the city taxpayers to pay for the library twice because we're already living in the county, and the library being a county function. And I kind of feel like that some of the county responsibilities, they're on and over on the city to some degree, and ask the city to help pay for that. And I, I don't think it's appropriate to ask the city taxpayers to have to pay twice for the service.
Well, well taken, council. Any other, any other comment?
One question. Who is the liaison on behalf of the council to the library? Johnny.
How about Enjani, the echo to every...
Who is the liaison from the council?
Council member.
On the, on the, on the library. Okay, thank you.
That will be, I, I think, after Mr. Cobb gets his research. I think something that we'll certainly consider.
Yeah, I just want to know who the liaison was.
But this document, Mayor and Council, this document that, for resolution, simply secures the process. It doesn't, it doesn't have the numbers. It simply secures the process by which the county and the city will jointly fund the library. That's all this does.
Been done for years.
Right, yeah.
We understand the resolution.
We, we, do we have, we have a motion?
I might have a motion.
Okay, okay. Any other comments from council? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one voting no.
Okay, item number four is consideration of contract for car washing service, Ms. White.
It's time, once again, to bid out the car washing services for our fleet. That's what all of our bids, we posted it on our website, we put it in a local newspaper, and we sent out bids. How's that?
Move the approval. Second.
A motion for approval. The second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, the second contract, item five, consideration of con...
If Cole's on Holland, then...
No, detail.
No, it's a detail shop. We did have...
Yeah, detail shop, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's on Holland.
Well, the detail shop is located at 100 Old Hickory, and we're using him and not Mr. Cole. Mr. Cole's price was higher this time.
Okay. Item five, consideration of contract for concessions at the West Tennessee Healthcare Sportsplex.
It's time, again, to rebid the food for resale at the Sportsplex. We had three bids, Cisco, US Foods, and JD Distributors. JD Distributors was an incomplete bid. They didn't bid on every item. So, the lowest and best bid is from Cisco, based upon unit pricing.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, council. Council.
Who had the, who had the contract, last?
I believe it was US Foods.
Okay. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item six is consideration of contract for trophies.
Time to bid out the trophies as well. We received three bids. Miss Tennessee Chime has had an incomplete bid, which means they did not bid on all of the items. Jackson Engraving and Awards and Henderson Trophy Shop, and the lowest and best bid is Jackson Engraving and Awards, based upon unit pricing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made for approval, property's second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item seven is consideration of contract for on-call detector loops.
We received three bids on this item, DeSoto County Electric, Jack Hornsby Electric, and Wade Electric, and the lowest and best bid is Wade Electric on airways, based upon unit pricing.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item eight is consideration of contract for on-call pavement marking maintenance.
We received one bid for this, and Traffmark out of Huntington was the only bid we received, and we would recommend the award of this, based upon unit price.
Move the approval. Second.
A motion for approval, property's second. Discussion.
Is this bid reasonable, as far as y'all get that? I was concerned that we just have one bid, whether out of, out of hand. I'm assuming it's totally out of hand. Y'all rebid them or try?
Right, and, and I always look at that before I bring this to you. Traffmark is, is a really good company, and based upon the prices that we had the last five years, this is a reasonable bid.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Additional discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, thank you, Ms. White. Item nine is consideration of board appointments under the Code Advisory Appeals Board, the reappointment of Jimmy Anderson.
Move for approval. Second.
Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous?
And the Jackson Community Redevelopment Agency, the reappointments of Willie Moore and Vicky Lake.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous?
And the Equalization Board, the reappointments of Betty Hearn and Virginia Williamson.
So moved. Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous?
And ten would be our budget amendments. Bill?
Good morning. We have four budget amendments this morning, one that you should have received by email yesterday. The first one that we have is for the fire admin capital, in the amount of $55,556, and this is for the purchase of two Ford Explorers to be used by the Jackson Fire Department. So moved.
A motion.
Second.
We have a second, second. Discussion, council. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous?
The second amendment that you have before you today is a transfer from funds from the SWAT Unit Operating Supplies into the Capitol Police Admin for the purchase of guns in the amount of $2,918. So moved.
Second.
Motion, property's second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous?
The third amendment that we have today is a grant that you received a press release about the Out of School Time Program, in the amount of $20,019.16. The grant will run May 1st, 2015, through February 1, 2016, with no match required. So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous?
The last amendment that you received yesterday is for the Safe Hope Center, Family Justice Center, in the amount of $101,409.2. This is for construction costs and network equipment wiring costs to get the building set up and running by June 30.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
And second. Discussion from council.
On that, we, we met last week and heard about last, the last meeting, and talked about the expenses of the city for this justice center, which paid basically just to be maintenance of the lawn, and, and then we got $100,000 expense all of a sudden. Why are we paying that and not the justice center itself paying that with the grant money?
The grant doesn't...
Captain Hope, come on up.
Captain Hope.
Didn't hear the whole question in the back.
I was just saying, at the last meeting, when we approved the justice center, the building, the use of the building, and us taking over and whatnot, our understanding was that the only expense we were going to have was going to be maintenance of the lawn and some small maintenance expenses. The next meeting, we've got $100,000 expense all of a sudden. Why the justice center itself is not paying for this, as opposed to the city taxpayers?
The grant, this time, only covers the cost of the salary of the site coordinator, the planning coordinator for the program. That's through the Office of Criminal Justice Programs for the state. The state and the Family Justice Center program expects the communities to develop the program. We were able to get the building for free, thanks to the hospital, West Tennessee Healthcare Foundation. To move operations there, though, the building's going to require some partition walls and some wiring and whatnot to set up the office. It's largely just an open floor-plan building. The justice center itself has not established a fund for operations yet because we're not operational. We're trying to get into the building and become operational. With that, we'll be relocating some of our resources there, the domestic violence and possibly sexual assault investigators. And the other initial tenant will be RAP. We'll be moving all of their operations there. They have a lease or for their building that wants to take possession of their building by July. So I apologize for the short notice, but we are trying to hurry up and wait trying to get these things done.
So the city's actually be bearing the expenses of the operation of the building, and the justice center is going to pay fund for the staff primarily?
Not exactly. What we're bearing the cost here is to get the walls up in the building, some minor construction. The operations will be split between us and RAP, the cost of operating the center, and that being utilities, water, wastewater, those normal course of business things.
So this is going to kind of be a one-time upfront to get it operational then, and it's not going to be a, we're not going to have a $100,000 budget every year as we go along?
No, but there will be an operational budget.
Okay, okay.
I guess my question along the same lines was, why is this not just a budget request? In the budget that we'll be voting on soon, as opposed to a budget amendment now?
One of the reasons is we'll lose the lease or for the building that RAP's trying to take over their building. They're going to use those costs from leasing their building to underwrite the operations cost at the Safe Hope Center.
And going forward, will it be just a regular budget request yearly?
Yes, through part of the operations budget.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And RAP will assume half of those operational costs?
That is our agreement.
Any other question? We have a motion and a second on this. Okay.
I have a question on the amendment. RAP moves in in July. Are they helping supplement any of the costs of construction for them to move in? Are we bearing all the costs for RAP?
We're bearing that cost.
And I have one question. I know we said the grant was going to cover the salary for the?
Site coordinator.
Okay. As far as sustaining that, would we be responsible for that salary in years to come?
In the planning stages of this, the Office of Criminal Justice Programs anticipates that we will shift from a site coordinator, a planning coordinator, to a director of some sort. At this point, we don't know how we're going to do that, whether that director will be from one of the agencies that's involved, or whether we will hire an outside person to do that. Certainly, I think grant funding will kind of help tell us that. This is the direction that the Office of Criminal Justice Programs is pushing communities to go in. I think the communities that are in this direction are going to be well-suited for funding.
I like the program, but I'm just wondering, you know, it's going to cost us more than just maintaining it. It could cost us additional salaries in years to come if the grant doesn't cover.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
I know that's up in the air, we don't know.
Mr. Chairman, how you doing? Good morning. What you're saying, the grant funding will determine the rest of the years, is that correct? After this year, grant funding will determine how we're going to operate the center, right?
Not entirely, no, sir.
No, I'm talking about the $101,000. Is going to be a capital request each year?
Oh, no, no, it's an operational request.
Okay, my original question is, is grant funding going to determine it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. And then the people who are staffing there will either, are people that are currently in positions in the city who is already paid by the city, or are under the same SART domestic violence unit grant, which is to be renewed in July.
Grant funding will determine.
Yeah, this will be the fifth renewal for that.
Thank you.
Do we have, you asked me for $101,000. Do we have any itemization of what that $101,000 is being spent on?
Yes. $78,000 is for the construction cost. $15,000 and change is the wiring.
Yeah, $78,000 is for the construction, $15,425 for the wiring, and the equipment is $675,3,319,464. And then the phones are $3,0525.
Who's doing the construction?
It'll have to be bid.
And I can provide that itemization if you'd like that. I could send you that detail.
If it hadn't been bid, how do we know what the figure is?
We did get an estimate, so we'd know what figures to base it on.
Okay, any other?
Realistically, there'd be more.
Yep. It's not going to be more. We will cut some walls or whatever we have to do to come in under budget.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from counsel? We have a motion, do we know it in a second? Okay, if not, counsel, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven members voting for it, one voting no, and one abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 11 is this consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Ms. Parker, do you have a student with you today? She asked her to stand in, her name, please. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Here being no further business, let's get to work. Me and Jordan.